Good evening. At this time, we will go ahead and get started with our board meeting. We'd like to welcome everyone to our first 2020 Board Meeting. And we're happy to see that we do have our new board members who are going to be present to be a part of our meetings from now on, as well as our incumbent, Dr. Nguyen and Ms. Humphries. We're so happy to have them back as a part of our school board. We hope everyone had a great Christmas holiday because what we're going to do this year is to work to be on track within our school system, within the schools, and even as a school board. We want to make sure that we are going to be very supportive in everything that we do. At this time, what I want to do is spend time going first over our board norms. We, as board members, we promise to respect differences of opinions in making decisions for our school district. We want to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself. We want to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while board, while at board meetings, to never surprise the superintendent or each other with, when conducting official business of the district. To read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder as to how we are to conduct our meetings, to continually self-check to determine if we are following our norms when conducting district business. And with that being said, we will now, at this time, go ahead and have our roll call. I'm sorry, we'll do the pledge and then we'll have roll call by our board clerk. So could everyone please stand as we do the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Westphal?
Maxine Drew.
Present.
Annie Humphries.
Present.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Present.
Alvinia Nguyen.
Present.
Stacy Yeager.
Present.
Yolanda Clark.
Present.
Randy Lopez.
Present. Thank you. At this time, we will have our board clerk, who will go through the swearing-in of our new Board of Education members. I'm sorry, thank you. Oh, thank you. Could we have a motion to approve the regular agenda? And if there are any that feel that we need to remove anything from the consent agenda, you can mention that now, please?
Madam President, I would like to set aside item E on the consent agenda. Do you like easy?
Anyone else? So could I get approval for us to approve the regular agenda with the exception of removing E from the consent agenda?
Still move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we will accept, approve the regular agenda with the exceptions of E from the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, the ayes have it. We will now go ahead and have the swearing-in of the board members. Ms. Westphal?
For the two incumbents, the two new board members would want to join me up front here.
I told her to do it. Smile.
So you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye.
You solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
You solemnly swear the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Kansas.
The Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully and honestly perform the duties.
Faithfully and honestly perform the duties.
Of my office as board member of the Unified School District Number 500.
My office, the board's member.
Unified School District 500.
Wyandotte County.
Wyandotte County.
State of Kansas.
State of Kansas.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I think it's going to take all of us together to school board.
One, two, smile. One more. All right, can we get the other board members?
Again, we congratulate our incumbent and our new board members. So with that in mind, we will now have recognition and awards.
In addition to congratulating our newly-elected board members tonight, I would like to take the time and opportunity to show our appreciation to each of the board members as we recognize January as School Board Recognition Month. Your dedicated volunteers who devote numerous hours of your day advocating on behalf of our students. The responsibility of our governing body of energetic members goes far beyond our monthly meetings. We truly appreciate your unwavering commitment to not only our students and the school district, but to this community as well. With that being said, I would like to read this to you and our community. Proclamation by the superintendent. Whereas the mission of the public schools is to meet the diverse educational needs of all children and to empower them to become competent, productive contributors to a democratic society and in an ever-changing world. And whereas our school board members are committed to children and believe that all children can be successful learning and that the best education is tailored to the individual needs of the child. And whereas our school board members work closely with parents, educational professions, and other community members to create the educational environment we want our students. And whereas our school board members are strong advocates for public education, are responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectation to the district. Now therefore, I, Dr. Charles Faust, Superintendent of Kansas City Kansas Public Schools, do proclaim January 2020 as School Board Recognition Month and urge all students, parents, and staff to join in recognizing the dedication and hard work of our school board members and continue working with them to mold an education system that meets the needs of our children today and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, thank you. Chocolate.
Thank you.
Definitely. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want everybody to be able to say, "Thank you." Thank you all for this. We didn't expect it, but it's good to be appreciated. Thank you so much. We now have Students of the Month recognition.
Madam President and fellow members of the board, it's my pleasure to introduce our Students of the Month for January. I'd like to start our introductions with our ECE winner, who is Kendrick Hernandez-Molina.
Don't wink, Mrs. Dwyer. I have to remember.
My name is Heather Terry and I am the principal at KCK ECC. I am presenting on behalf of Ms. Joanne Reinman. She wasn't able to be with us this evening. She fell this weekend, unfortunately. But I am excited to present Kendrick. In preschool, we focus a lot on social-emotional skills because when you have strong social skills and self-regulation, you're a better learner and a better friend. And Kendrick recently joined us at KCK ECC and he has been an exemplary student and friend. We have a few examples of his kindness. Kendrick continuously displays kindness and empathy to his classmates and teachers. He's a polite young man who is willing to help find solutions to everyday conflicts that arise for preschoolers. His peers enjoy playing with him and view him as a leader. Recently, Kendrick approached another student who was crying and refusing to walk in the hallway. He put his arm around him and said, "You can walk with me." Staff was talking with the student who had been aggressive over wanting a toy and Kendrick approached him and said, "My dad told me whenever you hurt someone, you should say you're sorry and see if they're okay, and then don't hurt them again." At recess, Kendrick was riding a bike and he overheard another student say that she wanted a turn. He stopped and told her, "I've been riding for a long time, so you can have a turn." He ran off to play with something else with a big smile on his face. So Kendrick is a wonderful example to his peers and a great helper to his teachers, so we're really proud to present him as our Student of the Month.
If we could have our members of the board and superintendent please come up front so we can get a picture with our ECE Student of the Month.
Sure. If he's even eligible to go to school. He's not afraid. It's tight. This is amazing. It's just amazing. Can you stand in the middle?
We would also like to acknowledge their parents, would you, his parents, would you please stand?
We have his parents, please stand up.
No, 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 just for the record.
I just want to say.
Okay, here we go, ready? Smile, smile. One more.
That is too cute.
And if we can just have you stay up there because we're going to announce our next winner. It's a third grader from Eugene Ware Elementary. It's Christian Ramirez-Rutiaga.
I'm a collaborative teacher at Eugene Ware Elementary School. I go into Christian's general education classroom daily. Christian has such a big heart. Selfless, caring, and hard-working are just a few ways to describe what a great student he is. Christian consistently puts the best interest of others ahead of his own. He is a friend to all and offers a helping hand to any student or teacher in need and is a great role model of what to do and how to behave. He comes to class every day with a smile on his face and a desire to learn. He is dedicated to being the best version of himself and puts a great amount of effort into everything he does. Christian's classwork is always of the highest quality and far exceeds expectations. He is always a positive influence on others and is always willing to lend a helping hand to a classmate. He is a wonderful student and definitely deserves to be a Student of the Month.
All right. And could his parents please stand if we acknowledge them as well?
Our middle school winner is a sixth grader at Arrowhead Middle School and her name is Kejong Lor.
Wrong one, okay. Hello, members of the board and Dr. Faust. I nominate Kejong Lor as Student of the Month simply because she amazes me. Her immense talent knows no bounds. She excels in all of her classes, bringing a deep understanding and drive to know more. Kejong can think creatively and always has great insight. And you cannot talk about Kejong without mentioning her artistic ability. Her sketchbook is a part of her, except for today, you didn't bring it. I very much love when she ties her passion in class to what we are learning. We created a funny story earlier this year as an example of narrative writing and Kejong, being Kejong, drew, brought the story to life through her drawings. Moreover, Kejong's heart is genuine. She is always guiding and helping others. Kejong frequently helps others without prompting or complaint. Simply put, Kejong inspires and amazes me. She is the best example of excellence in KCK PS. I'm Lauren Hernandez, by the way.
And our last winner is from the high school level, from Sumner Academy. They're unfortunately unable to be here tonight due to religious commitments, but we still want to honor them and the hard work that they've done to achieve this award. The winner is Giovanni Olgin. Their teacher will be presenting on their behalf.
I'm really excited that Giovanni can be acknowledged for such, for what an amazing student that he is here. And I also want to point out that at the time of writing this recognition for him, I saw an email from our principal, Mr. Malone, and I was debating on whether I should fill it up because I was so behind on, on so many things in my life. I was great behind on, it was in November, so I was behind on grading and, and lesson plans and my graduate schoolwork and just about everything else in my life. But after about a few seconds of thinking about it, I recognized how helpful Giovanni is in the classroom for me and to his classmates, so it wasn't that hard of a decision to make to write this. So Giovanni is outstanding, is outstanding in every sense of the word. As a student, he's always on task, asking great questions, and performing at the highest level. As a classmate, he constantly volunteers his time to help his colleagues understand the material, both inside and outside of class time. And as a person, Giovanni is very caring and friendly, constantly checking in with his teachers and classmates to make sure they're doing well. And it's not just a, "Hey, how's it going?", but it's very sincere and genuine every time. Giovanni works very hard and it shows. He currently, at the time of writing this, he had a 103% in my class and it got even higher by the end of the semester. And he ended up with the highest grade of any of my students in all of my classes, so like 150 students. And this is in chemistry class, which many of us might recognize as a pretty difficult subject. But Giovanni also, he enjoys a challenge and challenges himself not only through scoring near-perfect scores on everything that I throw at him, but also pushing his classmates to do the same. After Giovanni recognized that a number of his classmates were struggling with a particular concept, he and I organized the time with another high-performing classmates to perform a tutoring group, or to form a tutoring group for a number of students, which worked really well because I always encourage students to come, but they, I think they, they like it when they can have a classmates work with them as well. I have noticed since the very, since the very first day, many qualities of a great student in Giovanni, but after this selfless act, I felt obliged to send in a nomination for this exemplary student of mine. Giovanni is the epitome of a good student and I'm sure many of his other teachers can attest to this. And I do want to point out that I'm not the only teacher that's nominated him for this month. So another teacher, they couldn't make it tonight, but he got multiple nominations.
I'd like to call Ashley Washington, our January Employee of the Month, and Elaine Robinson, the person who nominated her.
I had no idea I had to come up here, so forgive me. I nominated Ms. Washington for Employee of the Month. Ashley has gone above and beyond for students and staff at Eisenhower. She has ice cream socials for parents, students, family, fun nights. She volunteers in our building for positive reinforcement for our male students. She has our firefighter to come in and volunteer in our building for mentoring. Ashley had our church, Village West Church, work closely to help us get $10,000, $10,000 donation for our school. She gets food donations for our students and family. Her resources of giving back is unbeatable. She has provided surprise breakfasts for our staff and gift cards through donations from her church. She is so deserving of this recognition. She is very humble in all she does for our building. And I recommend Ms. Washington for Employee of the Month. She is an outstanding person. I love her. We have become sisters to her.
Would her parents please stand? And all the family members?
So we'd like to thank everyone for the special awards that you've received. At this time, we're going to take a three-minute break so that the rest of the people here can say congratulations and we will resume in about 5:28.
Do we have one more recognition?
Oh, I'm sorry. Do you have one more?
For what?
Oh, okay. Thank you. My computer is off.
Dr. Faust, Madam President, board members, our police department, your school district's police department are the proud recipient of the winner of 12 national police departments throughout the United States, based on this photograph right here. Everyone, if you'd do me the pleasure. This photograph was taken and it won the, one of the photographs of the sixth annual community policing out of the Department of Justice Photo of the Year. Officer Muffrey is with me right now. This is where two great ideas come together. This was a great idea from the officers and staff that wanted to get together and do something good collectively with the elementary schools, so they bugged the chief to death who went out and bought some pumpkins and they sit down and had a good day with them. And out of that came a collaboration out of the communications team that took a photograph and a challenge by the team. I sent them an email and said, "Hey, here's a contest, let's get into it." They deliberately got on top of that, they sent it in here. And with the fine work of Officer Muffrey and this young person, we come up with one of the top winners, one of the top 12 in the United States to represent the Department of Justice, community-oriented policing, and your district. This will have every national publication for every police department in the United States coast to coast. So Officer Muffrey.
Congratulations.
What is saying about a picture speaks for a thousand words? Proof is in the pudding. You also acknowledge the better half.
A picture.
All right. One more smile. Here we go. All right. Crazy-ass mother married to another officer from Kansas City Police Department. Officer Muffrey.
So at this time, we will go ahead and take a break and it is now 5:29 and in three minutes we will resume. For everyone to congratulate those who have received the award. Thank you. Our members were ready to resume?
You want me to take it for you? Oh, okay. I can take it for you if you want.
We are now going to move ahead on our agenda with community comment. And before a person comes forward, want to make sure that we go over the rules for speaking, beginning first with that the persons are eligible to participate in the community comment. At the beginning of their remarks, they must state their name, their address, and telephone number to be recorded and enrolled and to be maintained by the board clerk. Speakers must limit their remarks to three minutes, which may also include questions by the board. Speakers will be timed and are advised that when they're, and will be advised when their time has expired. Extensions may be granted upon the majority vote of the board. Speakers may only address the board about the policy-related issues and general community concerns. We ask that no derogatory or critical remarks about specific district personnel or students be, or, well, they are prohibited. Speakers wishing to submit written materials to supplement their remarks should make 12 copies for proper distribution. And if there is a hot issue, speakers will The speaker will be permitted to comment as determined by the board president or presiding officer. The speaker must adhere to the three-minute time limit. And with that being said, we will now have a community comment from Joyce Mahan Schultz on the IEP process. Is she here? Okay, so therefore, we will forego that and move forward where we will go to our Kansas City, Kansas Public Libraries, Ms. Carol Levers as director.
Evening, Madam Chair, Board. Dr. Faust. On behalf of the Kansas City, Kansas Public Libraries, I wish to, wish you a Happy New Year and welcome to the new board members. Looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to start by reading our mission for the Kansas City, Kansas Public Libraries. Our mission's connecting members of our dynamic community with information, tools, resources, and welcoming spaces to enrich their lives. Our vision is leading the way in reading, information, and culture. Our values, excellence in public services, intellectual freedom, and patron privacy, community partnership, embracing diversity, and valuing and empowering our employees. We're going to do November stats and December in one. Our circulation for November was 78,206 items that we circulated, and it's broken down by a library. And the type of circulation is also broken down. And the print in November exceeded our AV, which we were really excited about. Our programs outreach, for in-house, we had 305 programs, and we had 4,906 people attending those programs. Our outreach, that's outside the libraries, we had 126 programs, and we had 5,068 people attending those. Our e-community library, reading online, 12,312 items were accessed, databases that were accessed, and a number of sessions we had on our website were 830 sessions, and it's all broken down what they've accessed. Circulation for December 2019, circulation by location is broken down for you, and the amount was 69,534 items were circulated in December. And the type, this time AV exceeded our print again, and we had that amount accessed. Our programs and outreach for December, in-house, we had 259 programs with, and I can't see it from here.
3,198.
1,000.
3,198.
Right, thank you. And outreach outside the library, we had 91, and we had 2,580. I took out our luncheons that we gave to the kids during those two months, actually just in December, and you can see we've broken down. It's Main and West Library had, Main had 13 sessions for Kids Cafe, and West had 14. So we had 27 days that we've fed the students with sandwiches, 277 of them. Our e-community for December, reading total was 9,204, and our database sessions we accessed As you know, we had the snowflake swing in December. We had 215 people attending the snowflake, and basically, most people saw this on our Facebook, as you can see, how did they hear about the event, and the ratings, 77.2%, it was an excellent program, and we had no answers that was, were poor. We had 41,000, 41.6% of cardholders, and we had 56.4 non-cardholders. I, Ms. Brownlee Page, I, a little handout for you especially, because you wanted to know how the patrons respond, and if you open it up, you will find some photographs of our program, which gives you an idea of what it looked like at the dance. And there's a list of the comments, the cards that we received. Thank you to everyone for having this event so much fun. Write down to love this evening and looking for next year. And from social media too, thank you much for a wonderful event. We enjoy this event so much, already looking towards next year. But you can read the rest of those comments, and I just thought, you know, I'll put it that way and maybe give you an idea of what happened. If you turn the page, we've received a letter from Dan Rodriguez to myself. He said, in appreciation of the concert, I'm providing you with a copy of all the photos, which we couldn't really use because we didn't ask permission to the people, but we appreciated that he did. He, I very much enjoy the music-oriented events. Please consider having more such mini concerts, maybe 30 minutes or less involving high schools or middle schools near each library, maybe small groups during school hours, which I don't know if you can do that, but we've done it before, but I know that they're very busy, but we'll look into it and work with the schools. He says, regarding me, I like to see my tax dollars at work for free or at low admission costs to me. That's just a small portion. And then another program we had was the cloth and community, the Mong textiles. There's some pictures for you to review. Our holiday programs, the Main Library were asked, was asked to do the mayor's prayer, mayor's tree lightning, and they've asked us to make, to trim the tree that was out there, and everybody was excited, and that tree was done by the Main Library staff. We also had stories with Santa at the Main Library during our holiday program. You can see the mobile libraries had their crafts, and craft, if you turn, a visit from Santa. On our book, mobile libraries, we took Santa all over where we, we do have our stops. And Ethel Schlegel had the night tales. South had Santa portraits, if you could read that. And then, of course, West had Frozen, a celebration. Turner, their Christmas programs with Star Wars Holiday Special. And I'd like to also invite you to our 19th Annual Miss and Mrs. Ethel Schlegel Eagle Days, which is coming up this weekend, and it's Saturday and Sunday. And we, because, because we don't have enough space, we do it both sides of the, of the lake, and that will be in Davis Hall and in Ethel Schlegel. So hope to see you there from 9 to 5 on Saturday, and I think it's 12 to 4 on Sunday. Any questions?
I have one.
You have one?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Hi, Ms. Levers. Thank you so much for the report and the presentation. I really appreciate it, and thank you to you and to all the library staff. You guys are super valuable for our entire community, so I just wanted to say I appreciate all the work that you all put in every single day to serve. Call me sentimental, I love data, I love numbers, I love seeing all of this information. I would love to see maybe in future presentations, if you could maybe include some, just examples of some of the programs. I see that we have a lot of programs that we serve our community, maybe some examples of what they are, and then some pictures. I know you gave us some pictures here, but it'd be great to have them up for everyone to be able to see pictures of things that are happening in our community, and so I think that would just be a really great thing to see as well, including all of the data that you provided, so. But I appreciate your report. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Levers. I'll transfer that to the staff as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Just wanted to say that this is just excellent to know that traditionally, libraries for books, but we see now that there is a change, and we are seeing that our community, not only the students, are utilizing what we have. And so it's very appreciative for us to be able to see it, to know it, and I can agree with you, the public to see it. And that may bring more out. And also, I went to Eagle Days last year, and I really enjoyed it, so much so that I'm going back both days this year. So thank you. It's amazing to see those birds, it really is. And so it's a good learning experience, not only for children and family members, but for anybody, yes.
Family, yes.
Definitely, thank you.
Thank you.
So now, at this time, we will approve the payment of bills for the Kansas City, Kansas Public Libraries.
I'd ask that the Kansas City Board of Education approve the payment of bills for the Kansas City, Kansas Public Libraries, as submitted by Dennis Covington, Chief Financial Officer, and as recommended by myself, Superintendent of Schools.
Make a motion that we approve the payment of bills for the Kansas City, Kansas Public Library.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the payment for the bills for the Kansas City, Kansas Public Libraries. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, thank you, the ayes have it. We're now ready for the reports of the superintendent. For the proposed calendars for the 2020, 2021, and 2021 and 2022 school years. Mr. King.
Good evening, Madam President.
Good evening.
Members of the board, Dr. Faust. I've asked Jen Holt, President of KCKNEA, to join me up here today because the calendar proposal is a joint effort. And so for the new members, and perhaps the old members didn't realize, there's a legal consideration with the calendar. You're required by law to submit a calendar to the state so that they know when it is. So our practice has been in the past that it's a joint effort between the, our union and administrators from the district to be part of it.
So we look at it from our perspective, it's part of our negoti, it's an arm of our negotiations team. So many years' negotiations will continue on into the year a little bit, so by separating out the calendar committee, that lets us make sure that we can all plan and schedule ahead of time and that it's not fully linked, so this connects with negotiations. And we actually, we have, I think, just one? Anybody else, other members of the calendar committee that I do?
If you stand up, if you're part of the calendar committee.
Oh, my gosh, we have one.
Good.
And so it's, and we get a representative of administrators, secretary, teachers, we have a variety of perspectives brought into the table.
And another point about approving a calendar is important because we have to have a calendar in place before we can begin our scheduling for next year. So that's a vital part of it. The committee met for a total of seven times, so seven evenings is the committee, that's why we wanted to give them some recognition, because they put in a lot of time on their own. And we also kept the superintendent's cabinet updated often so they would be aware of what it is, and we took a lot of feedback from that throughout the process.
We started with looking at our past calendars, looking at area calendars, brainstorming, what is it we've heard since last year's calendar, and pulling everything together to essentially have a start with for that conversation, and then that's what we use to go back and forth with cabinet.
One of the things that we heard concerns about from this past year's calendar was starting so early. We started on, the first day of school was August 6th this year. At the same time, Mr. Covington and a group of his workers came, and they asked if there was a way that we could delay the start of school because of, in order to get the construction projects in. So we had a complaint or a concern by the teachers, as well as a concern that happened to fit together. They weren't in conflict of each other. So we knew automatically we were starting later this, this coming year in the proposal.
So some of the highlights, we've, we've got, like Ellen mentioned, we've got a later start. We've got our traditional, we kind of call them just non-duty days. We've got a non-duty day and a stretch in October and April that tend to be a time when everybody is looking forward to that little bit of a break. Five days at Thanksgiving, full two weeks at winter break surfaced as a priority area. And then we align with other area districts was a big piece as well.
So these were things that we initially asked the staff on to prioritize these. The highest one was the two-week winter break. The second highest was the later start to the school year. So, so we worked to align those. So in looking at that, in trying to, trying to keep the summer schedule a bit longer, we developed an initial calendar we call Proposal A. And Proposal A, in order to shorten time and still get out at the regular time, we, we proposed that we would only have three days of Thanksgiving, and we would eliminate the October and April teacher non-duty days. So that would shorten us up by four days that we could, could work that in. But then we also, in order, because we were going to take this back for a public feedback, we had to have some other options. So since the two things we're really taking away were the Thanksgiving break and the teacher non-duty days, Proposal B put the five days back in for Thanksgiving break, but it still eliminated the teacher non-duty days. And then Proposal C included the five days of Thanksgiving and the three, and the two non-duty days. So A, B, and C is what we proposed out to the community. We sent it to, we sent it to parents, we sent it to, we asked high school students, and we asked staff for their feedback on it. And the results that came back from it were resoundingly Choice C, with the five days of Thanksgiving and the two, the teacher non-duty days of October and in April. So we will have those, so that, so the proposal we're giving you includes those in there based on the feedback we've got from, from the public. So our highlights for this proposal, once again, the late start in August. Our Fall Family Advocacy Day falls near the end of October, in fact, the Thursday before the end of October, with Friday being the non-duty day. And then we have the full week off at Thanksgiving, the two full weeks at the winter break. Our Spring Family Advocacy falls before, just before the President's Day, like it has for the last couple of years, gives the kids a four-day weekend. Our spring break matches the spring break of Kansas City, Kansas Community College. That's something we're trying to make sure that we try to do each year because that way the kids don't have to go to school on their break. The non-duty day for staff then in April follows kindergarten roundup, and then the last day of school still occurs before Memorial Day, but it will occur about a week later than this current year because of the extent, because of the later start, and then we still had those holidays in there. And we also ensured that the breaks aligned with published school districts calendars that are out there. Right now, and about the time we start, which is early October, the only calendars out there we find are usually the Johnson County schools, but aligns with them. The Wyandotte County, County Schools tend to put their calendars out about the same time we do. So we look for an alignment with those. Questions?
I want to thank you guys because one thing I really appreciated is asking for parent feedback. And you guys know I'm all about technology, so seeing that link up there saying, parents, we want to hear your voice, it helped open up the community to feel part of this process. Do we know how many parents, high schoolers, et cetera? Do we know how many participated?
Unfortunately, only around 200 parents responded. We had 586 high schoolers respond because we did it during school time too as well. And I appreciate what you had to say about communicating, and also I wanted to give a shout out to our communications team because they're the ones who made sure it was blasted out in all of our different forms of media so, so it could reach out to people.
Great. Also, have we considered a two-year calendar? I, I know you mentioned Johnson County already has theirs out. I noticed that they do tend to do them, you know, a couple of years at a time, or, and the college does too, so I wondered about that.
Well, thank you for bringing that up because I, we did not make that clear. This, the proposal we're giving you is also for the 21, 20, 20, 2022, 21, 22 calendar.
I was just rolling.
Hard to get that one out.
I figured the dates would be different.
And what, and what it is, is basically, we're taking our proposed calendar from 2021 and superimposing it on the calendar for 2022. So it's basically the same calendar.
I thought they were the same. I'm like, these really look the same.
And the board, as always, has the, the right to come back and make adjustments as we find things that we need to care of. For instance, you did that several months ago when we realized we had a day that we had, we had one extra day in the calendar because of leap year, and so you, you voted to close the school district on December 30th, and I didn't hear any complaints about it.
Just like for process-wise, so if we wanted to make broad changes...
Unfortunately, only around 200 parents responded. We had 586 high schoolers respond, because we did it during school time too as well. And I appreciate what you had to say about communicating, and also, I wanted to give a shout-out to our communications team, because they're the ones who made sure it was blasted out in all of our different forms of media, so, so it could reach out to people.
Great. Also, have we considered a two-year calendar? I, I know you mentioned Johnson County already has theirs out. I noticed that they do tend to do them, you know, a couple of years at a time, or, and the college does too, so I wondered about that.
Well, thank you for bringing that up, because I, we did not make that clear. This, the proposal we're giving you is also for the 21, 20, 20, 2022, 21, 22 calendar.
I was just rolling.
Hard to get that one out.
I figured the dates would be different.
And what, and what it is, is basically, we're taking our proposed calendar from 2021 and superimposing it on the calendar for 2022. So, it's basically the same calendar.
I thought they were the same. I'm like, these really look the same.
And the board, as always, has the, the right to come back and make adjustments as we find things that we need to care of. For instance, you did that several months ago, when we realized we had a day that we had, we had one extra day in the calendar because of leap year, and so, you, you voted to close the school district on December 30th, and I didn't hear any complaints about it.
Just like for process-wise, so if we wanted to make broad changes, we would probably run it back through committee, so then it would bring it back into the negotiations process.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question? I'd just like to say that from teaching back in the day, breaks are great, and during the wintertime, you do have to take into consideration the weather. And so, my question is, even if, when they come back in January, have you all included the extended days that will be, that could be added in, or will you wait until the time comes?
That, that's a decision that comes from administration on how we go about doing that. One thing that we have to consider, that same law that says you have to turn in the calendar, also says the number of minutes or days, depending on your calendar, that you have to have, so we have to. Our biggest concern is always making sure we get our, our seniors through the number of hours required before they graduate. So, it depends on, you know, the weather, if, you know, we've had a late start, we've had a, a snow day and a late start, so that calculates in some.
Okay, right. Thank you so much. I know it was a lot of work to be able to do this, and do appreciate you, and again, just like you said, the community. And even though parent numbers were low, if you continue to do that, it shall rise. They will get on track as well. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I ask that the Kansas City Board of Education approve the 2020, 21, and 21, 22 proposed calendars as submitted by Allen King, Interim Assistant Superintendent, and as recommended by myself, Superintendent of Schools.
Can I get a motion, please?
It's removed. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the 2021, 2020, 2021, and 2021 and 2022 school year calendars. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you. We're now ready for, to approve contract for literacy training. I'm not going to dare say that word.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Faust. Board members, congratulations on the reelection and those who are newly elected to the Board. We're really excited to work with you this year, as we continue our work with our students and making sure we're on track. Tonight, you'll notice that we do not have both presenters that are listed on our presentation. I'm Matthew Anderson, Director of Curriculum and Instruction. Mr. Terrence Sanders unfortunately is not able to be here tonight, he got the bug, which seems to be going around. But, we actually have Dr. Lynette Hook in here to step in to his place to help with this presentation.
So, so I'll begin with, one of our district priorities is to ensure that we increase student achievement at KCKPS. So, I do want to bring to your attention our benchmark data, and this is a part of the presentation, but I just feel that everyone should know where we are as a district. So, our overall reading proficiency rate, our October benchmark results, we had an overall 20.4% in October, in December a 21.3, in grade three, 24.7, and during the month of December, a 29.1. Now, with that being said, there's always room to grow. It's crucial that our students in grades K through two have a strong literacy foundation. That's what this presentation is about tonight. One in three children who began in grade K without the necessary skills will not be able to read. All educational research that's out there proves that if students are introduced to literacy at an early age, they'll tend to be more successful in life, just not in school, but in life. Eighty percent, 83% of children who are not reading at grade level at the beginning of grade four are at risk to graduate from high school. This is unheard of, but it's true. Why is this need urgent? In KCKPS, we are proud of our growth, but we need more. We strive to be the best, and we cannot afford to wait until we get to grade three to enhance our professional development trainings, to train our teachers, provide additional support. In other words, we are going to be a high-performing district in which we are proactive. How do you be proactive? You know that it is crucial to have the necessary foundational skills at pre-K through the second grade level. I'm not going to go on, because I will go on and on about the research, but I'm going to let you talk, because you're my co-partner. Go ahead.
So, as we move forward in our presentation, you'll notice our objectives. Before I address these objectives, I wanted to kind of give you a background story of where we are as a district currently. Currently, KCKPS has a literacy framework that is a balanced literacy approach. Within that balanced literacy, literacy approach, we focus on several key components: read alouds, monitored independent reading, shared reading, guided reading, phonics word study. Over those years, we provided some professional learning, and we've done some focus specifically in the areas of read aloud and guided reading. We still have work to do as it relates to the other components. We know that as we consistently bring in new employees, it's important that they're aware of what our literacy framework is. We have to always provide the highest quality professional development for our teachers. One of the things that we need to do is, instead of buildings making up their own plans for literacy, we need a district-wide plan. As we think about our guaranteed viable curriculum, and we think about our curricular resources, over the past two years, our curriculum department has worked tirelessly to ensure that our GBCs, our Guaranteed Viable Curriculum, are aligned to the standards. We also ensure that all of the curricular resources we adopt are aligned to standards, and that our teachers know how to use those. So, what is it, why do we need to bring someone in? Why do we want Patalogos to be a part of this work? So, as I mentioned, we have a literacy framework. We need to enhance it, we need to make it better. So, as you look up at our objectives, the first objective is to develop an elementary literacy framework, pre-K second, focus on the foundation, so our kids are ready for third, fourth, and fifth, and beyond. We want to ensure that we deepen the capacity of not only our teachers, but also our district-level leadership, so we can support our teachers and increase student achievement. And then, finally, we want to ensure that the resources that we have adopted are being implemented the best that they can be, and that we can utilize their support to help us with recommendations, where might we need to supplement, where might we need to make some changes. So, we do what's best for our kids and what's best for our instruction. To give you a little background of the process, the process would be that we have 14 face-to-face sessions with our consultant. Our consultant is Misha Brown, she's actually out of New York City. She's the founder and the lead consultant for Patalogos. Misha Brown, before she became a consultant, was the Director of Literacy in New York Public City Schools. She brings with her a wealth of knowledge of diverse school districts, large urban school districts, and what literacy can look like for our students. Not only has she worked in large public schools, but she's worked in smaller public schools, she's worked in suburban, she has worked with Dallas Independent School District, she's done work in Providence, Rhode Island, she's done work in Arkansas, and she's also done work in Houston ISD. What we need to remember is that she isn't bringing just a cookie-cutter process. She will help us develop a process that's going to work for us and meet the needs of our system. So, in that process, there are three phases. It's two phases, two sessions for the information gathering, which will be with us, and I'll give you a little more information about each phase in the upcoming slides. Phase two is 10 sessions. Those 10 sessions are us testing and doing job-embedded professional development with our teachers in the classrooms at 10 pilot schools, and then finally, bringing us back as a system level, and then talking about where our strategy finalization, what are we going to do next steps.
So, our plan is to definitely identify the bright spots, meaning that we're doing good things in our district, but how do we get greater? So, the work that will actually take place will consist of looking at the resources that we're actually using, and also interviewing our stakeholders. We sometimes tend to forget the people who do the work, and not to just have someone to come in and say, "We do X, Y, Z," but it's also to put together what we already have in place and enhance the work in KCKPS.
So, phase two, the testing and the professional development. This will be in 10 pilot schools. I, I know that you can read those bullets, so I'm not going to reiterate those. I'm going to pull out and highlight a couple of the bigger pieces, some of the special things that this can offer. One thing that makes this opportunity more beneficial than others is that we are bringing the consultant into our district and doing job-embedded development with our teachers. This isn't, we pull everyone to central office and provide a workshop. The job embedded is, we go into these 10 pilot schools, and we work directly with our students, and we work directly with our teachers, our principals, and instructional coaches. One of the things is, when you say, you hear 10, you think, "Well, what about the other schools?" We will be touching every single school in this process as well. It's just, we're not going to be working directly in their schools. We will be bringing the principals from across the district in those elementary buildings into the work with us. So, as we're modeling, as we're co-planning and co-teaching with teachers as it relates to the literacy framework that comes out of phase one, we will pull these folks in so that when we are ready to move on to phase three, we can have them have some capacity to keep moving forward. So, I want to just reiterate, although it says 10, we're actually going to be working with all principals in this work. Finally, what do you do with all that stuff that you did in those 10 days? Well, you collect data, you collect feedback from the stakeholders that are participating in this work. What we want to do is ensure that we've looked at, what are the successes of the work that is accomplished with the literacy framework, but also, what are the challenges? We can't ignore those, there will be challenges. But, we can take that information and revise the literacy plan that we have developed as a group. Sorry, I'm hitting some buttons. And then, we take the rest of that time to think about, what are we going to do for 2021? What are we going to do to ensure that we have 90% of our students reading at grade level in kindergarten? How do we sustain that work in first grade, and how do we sustain that work in second grade, so that when kids get to third grade, they are not far behind? We need to be on track. So, this is what we are proposing, is that we utilize this partnership with Patalogos to do what's best for our kids and to do what's best for our system. Are there any questions?
Dr. Nguyen?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you.
You're welcome.
So, let me frame these questions in the context of recent legislative post audit about use of at-risk dollars. So, my, my first kind of umbrella question is, what is the, the, what's, what's the budget for the 50, 49,000? What budget is that coming out of?
So, do we know what budget is in this year? Do we know what budget is coming out of?
It'll come out of the at-risk budget.
So, because of the legislative post audit, will at-risk dollars be used?
And let me just say this, our district has funding to support at-risk students, and so, this is a part of that work.
Right, I mean, we're 90% at-risk, so.
Correct, because the work entails us ensuring that we support struggling readers, and the way to do that is just not to support the students who are actually testing, but to support students at an earlier age to ensure that we don't run into those issues.
So, then, the real question is, in view of the legislative post audit, how will we document, if pulled up on the carpet?
Yes.
Excuse me, if those at-risk dollars are not spent according to, and I'll call it, for lack of a better word, Science of Reading Evidence-Based Programs.
Yes.
Now, I asked for some background information, so what you provided, I, I read.
Yes.
But, what, what evidence do we have that Ms. Brown?
Misha Brown.
Brown has, is familiar with the strategies that the, let me stop there, let me back up.
Yes.
There's going to be some legislative action, probably, that we don't like in view of this legislative post audit, because there are those legislators who do not like at-risk dollars. Okay, so, so that's a reality.
Yes.
The second reality is, and we haven't even talked about the high-risk, high-density at-risk dollars that are on the table.
Yes.
Okay, so, so that's the backdrop. So, so the question is, what evidence do we have that the consultant will use a strategy that if, if, if required, can present strategy, let's say, Lawrence uses, I call it lettuce, but I don't know if that's the right word, L-E-T-U-S, that something that the State Board of Education, the Kansas Department of Education, that evidence-based nationwide studies have proven.
Yes.
What strat-, do we know that?
That is a wonderful question. And the school districts that were stated, were stated for a particular reason. Right now, we have a total of, and let's say, within our entire district, 10,925 students were tested on the benchmark exams that are reported out. Of those 10,000, Dr. Nguyen, 3,780 students have been identified as emergent bilingual students. So, the districts that have considered this program and utilized the information thoroughly, executed properly, they're dealing with what we're dealing with as well, an influx of ELL learners that are basically struggling. Not only ELL learners, but learners who understand English as well. Now, let me report out the data that goes along with that, because I mentioned to you and to the board that 20.4% of our students were proficient, that's not enough, 21.3 in December. Now, if we take a look at our ELL learners, only 8.9% in the month of October. Yes, we had a slight increase to 10% in December, well, what's 10%? So, if we're looking at what other districts are doing to support the influx of students that are arriving, we have to be on board and ahead of the game, and why wait? So, that's a great question, what you posed, because that is the reason why we simply stated those districts. New York, they deal with ELL learners every single day, and just like us, they have a larger population of ELL students who are non-Spanish speakers, just like us. And it's happening to us, but we're trying to be proactive about it. So, to answer your question, ma'am, the answer to that question is that the research and the outcomes, the results, the proven results that have occurred in those districts, due to the fact that they utilize this program, that's the research and the data that we're using to prove that it will be beneficial to us.
No doubt there is a need, no one disputes that there is a need. The question was, however, do we know particularly the strategies that she is using by name?
A great question, I got this.
I got this.
That's a great question, because just like the presentation stated, they're going to come in and they're going to see what we're doing first. Whenever we go into district, whenever they go into districts, all districts are doing different things. And it's based upon, this program is based upon the customization of how do we support KCKPS, what we're already doing, so we won't throw off the baby with the backwater. This means that we're simply having someone come in and take a look at what we're doing and enhancing the work, and also supporting us with best practices, if that makes sense. So, the person hasn't arrived yet, we're hoping that that person arrives to support us.
So, you'll be able to provide us with examples of the evidence?
Sure, not only with that, with the outcomes as well. Not only are we going to provide you with the outcomes, we're going to provide you with updates and also the results, because what we're not going to do is stand before you and present information and not gather results in the outcome. Did I answer your question?
Yes and no, and with respect, I guess I'm not, the sky is not falling as far as at-risk dollars, but the sky is, there's a crack. But the sky is, there's a crack in the, in the sky. Because with that and with the mandates from the dyslexia task force, unless, it appears that unless there is some pre-approved program, strategy or something, we won't get funding for it. So that's why I was just asking, do we know upfront? Yes, customized, I mean, every school is different. I got that. And, and if we're reading at 99%, there's still a percentage of students that are not being met. Their needs aren't being met. But, but with respect, I'll say, no, you didn't answer the question. Because I see her, the credentials, we know, what is the, what's the number of New York districts? A million students plus. And the diversity, they have languages we can't even think of. So literacy is baseline, got that. But just, just saying, there's, there's, for me, there's something a little bit missing as far as just the reassurance that, not questioning the company, but that 50,000, cool, that's, that's to bring you in, have your 12 sessions. Now, after that, will there, will we have these strategies that will meet the dyslexia mandates? The, if it needs pre-K SDE, whether that's good or bad, if it has to be pre-approved, is it going to meet the muster? Don't know until it comes. That probably was the better answer.
Okay, so let me, let me interrupt. Do you have an alternative plan for us, Dr. Nguyen?
They have the data, I have, I don't have an alternative plan. I just, for, for me, it's, it's that a little bit more reassurance, maybe consultation with the consultant. In view of Kansas.
Absolutely. So in that information gathering phase, that allows us from the curriculum and instruction department to work closely with the consultant to ensure that they're aware of the mandates that our state requires as it relates to at-risk funds. So what we can do is ensure that we have all of that information available upfront to ensure that she knows, like, we're not going to go rogue. You don't come, you're not coming in and just changing everything we're doing. We've got things that we have to ensure that we have in place.
Seems a little backwards. You'll sign a contract at $49,000 before she comes in.
Say that again.
Seems a little backwards. You'll sign a contract $49,000 before she comes in. Have you had these conversations prior to? Does she know what she's, what state of Kansas is, she's coming into?
Not only that.
Not she, whomever.
Right. Well, I'm going to get back to the data and where we are and knowing that we need help.
Okay, and before you go there, let me just interrupt. First of all, I do appreciate the information that you're giving us in relation to the data, because we do have to start somewhere.
We have to.
And this is a good, I believe, a good program, whereas we will definitely be able to give feedback and get documentation before we actually put everything into place. So we have to start somewhere. So what I would like for us to do is to get a motion for us to approve this from the board, and then we can just move on. And if, if it doesn't pass, we'll come up with a different plan. But right now, I think you've done an excellent job in presenting the data, explaining exactly what is necessary, what has to be done, the fact that you're going to do a follow-up with the plan, and you're trying to do the best practices that will help our students to be successful. When you look at the numbers, that is the key for us to focus on. So I'm asking for the board, after, if you have no other questions or comments, then we go ahead and vote to either accept or reject this.
I have a question. How did we pick the 10 schools? You know, you said we're going to start with 10 schools.
Yes.
How were they selected?
So the schools will be selected, in order for us to ensure that we have a wide range of schools, we want to be sure that we select groups that support ELL learners at the elementary level. We want to support, depending on our demographic groups. So we want to make sure that we get a pool in which, when we look at the data, we can say that this works with this type of particular school.
Okay, because I didn't know if they were already chosen.
We can do whatever we like.
Okay. Is it possible, to help answer the question for Dr. Nguyen, since she was in these other districts, is there data to show what happened in those districts?
So is the question that she wants to know the data from other districts?
I'm just, I'm just saying, my, my question, let me, if this was done in other, you named several places.
Yes.
Is it possible to get that data, she worked with them, that we could see? And maybe that could help kind of clear up some things?
You know, I said I wasn't going to talk, but I just need to bring some closure to how that works. We can't measure other districts because of the, their, we don't know where those teachers were, where they started and where they were, where they ended. So because it's customized, our teachers may be farther along, they may be not as far. We're doing professional development, because it's customized, we just can't measure that. So I don't want us to say that we can get that data, and so we get data that has 90% and then our data doesn't come in there. We have to look at where the students are. There was a plethora of information that's in there, but that's, that's it.
And that's what I'm suggesting, is to look at where we are and what we are going to put into place to bring about a change. That's what we want to focus on.
All right, I have a question.
Sure.
How do we select this, I want to call them this, this vendor? How do we select this curriculum versus, did we do some comparisons of others? What made this the one, be the one that stands out?
Great question. Again, we're going back to the districts that utilize this program and knowing that the populations that are being served.
Okay.
And so if you look at us as a whole, as a district, we do have demographic groups that are represented, as such as the districts that Matt had stated before.
Another rationale for utilizing Patalagos is they're not a program or a curriculum. They're actually a consultant group. So what their job is, is to come in and partner with districts, district-level leaders, and work to take what they already have and enhance it. So one of the benefits of not having it come from a curriculum company is they're not selling anything. Their job is to ensure that they're doing what's best for our district. What are our needs as a system? What do we need to get out of this? Not, we're going to have you use, oh, this program and this is the benefit, like, all the things that'll come out of it. No, it's, what do you need? How can I support the work you're doing in your system? Thank you.
So could I get a motion, please?
Madam President, I'm sorry, can I ask a couple of questions? Thank you for the presentation and for the information, very helpful. Excuse me, just a couple of questions. I'm curious, and forgive me, it's my first day. I'm curious if you can explain why, did we think about internal, any internal staff who could do this type of evaluation of our programming, of our literacy programming? Why the need to go to an outside consultant? I'm just curious about that conversation. And then second question, in regards to the other districts, do, do we have references? Did we, you know, just in terms of the work, were they satisfied in terms of cost? Was it something that they felt their money was well-used through going with this consultant? Thank you.
Okay, so in terms of mentioning internal employees who could support with the work, with all of the work that we have been doing to enhance student achievement within this district, we have utilized outside support to give us different points of views. In other words, Mr. Lopez, we can't continue to do what we've done in the past.
Yes.
And what we found in our professional development sessions is that our teachers, our teacher-learners, our leaders have been open to what's happening in other districts. And not saying that we can't do the work within, but we have lifelong learners who are part of this district. Once they grasp something that another district is doing that is working, they are, they buy into what's happening, if that makes sense. Can we enhance the work in which we are taught? Yes, indeed. We do have ICs, we have others who can continue with the work. What we want to make sure that we do is that we're weaned off of people coming in to support us with the work. We have an intelligent group of people here. Once we learn what to do and we run with it, you're going to see the scores rise. It's all about having others to give information about what worked with the student population groups that we have. So I hope that that answers your question.
So with that, again, could I have a motion to approve the contract with Palatago's literacy training for the 10 pilot schools?
I make a motion that we approve the contract with Petalanos for our literacy training for our 10 pilot schools.
It's been moved. May I have someone second it? I second it. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed?
No.
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 So.
Can we do a roll call? Vote.
Maxine Drew.
Yes.
Janie Humphries.
No.
Wanda Brownie Page.
No.
Dr. Nguyen.
No.
Dr. Jaeger.
Yes.
Eon Ronda Clark.
No.
And Randy Lopez.
No.
Thank you. So it has been passed, that we will not approve the contract for Palatago's for literacy training for 10 pilot schools.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. We're now ready to go to the consent agenda. I need, we had item E, so Dr. Nguyen, before we approve it. Your comments, please.
Consent agenda.
Okay, I'm sorry, thank you. Could we, could I have a motion for us to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item E?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that we approve the consent agenda with the exception of item E. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Now, Dr. Nguyen, item E.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. And this is for, the reason I pulled item E, because I felt it was important that the board had a discussion. We found that perhaps on the consent agenda, things are overlooked and they are missed. So while the resolution is legal, the intent of the legislature, and Mr. Goheen is there to either correct or not correct, but the intent of the legislature, when they passed this law, two things. One, those proponents wanted to make school board elections partisan. And that was, in my opinion, pushed back. The second was to try to move everything to January. But they didn't write the language clear enough. So there's a lot of wiggle room in, in the language of the law. And so let me just make the motion. If it gets a second, then we can have further discussion. And that is the sole purpose of pulling item E, because if it was not pulled, it would have gone ahead and we would not have had discussion that at least the intent of the law, in my opinion, required. So my motion is to reject the resolution and vote to hold elections at the next meeting in January. That's my motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that we reject the resolution and go ahead and have election at the next meeting in January. All those in favor?
Any questions?
Oh, I'm sorry, any questions?
I want to make a friendly suggestion to the motion, because I think if you have the election in the second meeting in January, it would still have to be by resolution. So I'm not changing what I think the intent of what you're wanting to do would be, but the election in January would be by resolu, you're making a resolution to have the elections in the second meeting in January.
That's not what the law says, but if you interpret it that way, there's no argument there.
Yeah. Yeah, I just was trying to make sure, let me make sure, I got the statute pulled up, so let me make sure I got it right.
So there's no argument there. Do you like, while he's looking, let me go ahead and, to save time?
Yeah, I think you guys can move forward. I just want to make sure we got the language right on the motion that shows up, so that if that's what you end up doing, we do it right.
Okay, so would you make your motion?
It just says it's so determined by the board, so I think your first language is fine.
Okay, all right. So the motion has been made. All those in favor?
Discussion, discussion.
Okay, anyone else with a discussion?
Just let me explain.
Okay, go ahead.
That, once again, it is the, the way the resolution reads, now, it is, as I say, it's legal, it's clear. Because I'm in the legislature and because I'm on the board, I contacted Legislative Research. They clarified the, the language. I contacted KSB Legal Counsel, because I'm also a member of the board. Now, one would read, one would, if, if one doesn't read correctly, it would, it would almost make you think, but it doesn't say that. It only says as recommended by Dr. Charles Faust, but as submitted by KSB Legal and as recommended. It would give one then, in the thought that KSB Legal was recommending this, and they're not. And so that's why I'm saying, discussion, whatever happens is going to happen. But I think it's important that we have clarification and we have the discussion. KSB Legal said that they were contacted for language, to quote. Question presented to me was, can you please help with the wording for a resolution to postpone reorganizing the board election, election of officers in parentheses, until July? I know with the legislative changes, we need to either elect board officers in January or pass a resolution due, excuse me, to defer the election of officers until the reorganization meeting in July, end quote. So that, as I say again, the resolution is correct, the law is correct, is clear. But if, it's the prerogative of the board to have this discussion. And I felt it was important that the board members have full knowledge of this resolution before we move forward. And that's why I pulled it off of the consent.
Any other comments? So we, we voted to wait until July 2020.
Now, that's a question, and you would have to go back to the minutes.
I don't remember exactly the timing of everything, but you had the option in, as I recall, you had the option in the July meeting, which was traditionally the reorganization meeting prior to the legislative change, to elect officers or to defer or wait until the January election. And you went forward and elected officers in July. You have that same option by statute each year. So each year, you either decide to elect your officers in the January meeting or you defer that election until some later point in the year. It doesn't actually specify that it has to be the July meeting. But you still have other reorganization requirements in that July meeting, because that's the end of the, the June 30 is the end of the fiscal year and the end of the academic year for the school district by statute. So there are some things that have to happen in that July meeting. Other things can happen in the January meeting. As I understood, the legislative change, moving the elections to January by default, unless the board takes action to delay them, was to account for the fact that the elections had been moved up to the November timeframe. As opposed to previously, they would take place in the spring.
Okay, so what we have to decide now as a board as to what our choice is, to continue with what we're doing now or to make the change and vote in a new president in this month or wait until July? That's, that's the choice. Any discussions?
But that's not the motion.
No, it's not the motion. I'm just still on discussion. Any comments from anyone?
Because I, I was naive. I know when we came in, we did it in January, and then we did it again in July. No, no, yes, when we came in, we did do that. Well, we.
But, but is it, yeah, was it?
President didn't, was not.
Yeah.
Okay, but we did do it, that's what I'm saying. Now, the rationale behind it, we did do it.
Because we didn't have a vice president.
Okay.
Yeah, it was, it was a difference. The statute hadn't been passed yet, the change of the date.
So for clarity, we're to do it, and we should unless we decide to defer and do it later. That's the way we, okay, got you. Just wanted to make sure, because when we came in, I know we did it more than once. So that kind of threw me off. Got you.
Any other discussion? So could we get a motion? So could we get a motion?
You actually, you actually have a motion.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So, um...the motion was that we reject the resolution and have the meeting in January and make a resolution in order for us to vote for election of new president and vice president at the next January meeting.
I, I think that's essentially right. It's not a resolution. I think we decided that, but yes.
You just complicated the whole thing.
I, I think, I think the motion is to reject the resolution and defer the selection of officers, the president, the appointment of, or selection of president and vice president to the next January meeting, is I think what the motion was.
And this is the month of January?
Yes.
So, let's, um...it has been moved. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second. So therefore, could we have the vote, um...by persons, not just one? Okay, if you're calling that?
Roll call. Roll call.
Uh...Wanda Brownlee Page?
Yes.
Wanda Clark?
I'm so sorry. I just want to make sure. When I say yes, I'm saying yes to January 2021?
No.
Or am I saying yes to today?
Like next board meeting.
Okay, so I would say, and if I say, I'm so sorry, if I say no, I'm saying we defer...
We wait to July.
Okay, so my...
Well, there, there were...right now, you're just voting on the motion that's present, so the current motion essentially would hold the election for president and vice president at the next meeting. So that's all you're voting on right now. If, there would have to be a second motion if you guys want to defer the vote until, um...some later date. There'd have to be a second motion, because the default by statute is you do it tonight. That make sense?
So the motion is, again, okay, so your vote?
Okay.
So do you want to vote next meeting for president or in July? If you want July, you say no. If you want next meeting, you say yes.
I'll say no. I'm thinking I needed that simple.
Dr. Jaeger?
No.
Maxine Drew?
No.
Randy Lopez?
No.
Janie Humphries?
No.
Dr. Nguyen?
Yes.
The motion failed.
Thank you. So now we, I need to get a motion for us to have a resolution.
Or to approve the written?
To approve the resolution that is, to approve this resolution that is here.
I move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Could we have a roll call, please?
Wanda Brownlee Page?
No.
Wanda Clark?
Yes.
Stacey Jaeger?
Yes.
Maxine Drew?
Yes.
Randy Lopez?
Yes.
Janie Humphries?
Yes.
Dr. Nguyen?
No.
Thank you.
The resolution passes as written in the consent agenda.
Thank you. So could I get a motion that we approve E to be a part of the consent agenda?
No, it's, it's, it's...
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
It's already passed.
Well, now we're ready for payment of bills.
I'd ask that the Kansas City Board of Education approve the payment of bills as submitted by Dennis Covington, Chief Financial Officer, and as recommended by myself, Superintendent of Schools.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the payment of bills. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Policy review on board operations. Wanted to, um...let board members know that, um...we have been, um...taking care of a lot of things that are going on within the school district, but we need to begin to look at our poli...our board policy issues relating to the work of the state task forces that are coming up, particularly with vaping and bullying and everything else that is a part of that. Uh...we, what we want to do is to, uh...set up a time in which we can address these policies so that we can get them resolved, because some of them do need to be updated. And, uh...I've spoken with Lisa Garcia, and she is willing to work with us, and we just need to set up the time. So, um...could we please have, uh...any questions or discussions about any of these things relating to the policies?
So for clarity, we're going to do it not at a board meeting. We would take some more time.
What I want to do...
Have time to do it.
What we want to do is to set up committees so that we can look at them individually within groups of board members with those policies, to address it, to revise it, to, and then bring it to the board, and then we'll have discussion, and then we will approve. So are there any other questions?
Did we skip ahead to B, or I'm a little confused?
Right. Board discuss, discussion on process for reviewing and updating board policies. What I need your assistance in as board members is for us to come up with a plan as to how we can do this.
Um...I, I recommend that we have the committees that, um...is discussed on 11A, so we would know more about which committees are being, um...presented to us, and then from there, we can see who may be interested in those committees.
Okay. Any other comments?
I, I have a question. Now, you said the committees. I didn't see any committees listed.
No, there aren't. We will, we will just...
Okay, I mean, well, I was just listening to what she said.
I was recommending that we set up committees.
Oh, okay, because I was saying I didn't see it, or maybe she saw something I didn't.
Okay, one of the things that we wanted to do in relation to our committees, uh...we want to be able to focus on, we, uh...in our last board meeting, we talked about the negotiation with the teachers for the Kansas NEA. That's one. Then looking at finances, too, and then also looking at our policies. So what I'm asking board members to do is to be able to decide which one of those committees you would like to be a part of, so that you can set up some time to meet with individuals and go through anything that may need to be a part of us, looking at it as a board, and then discussing it, and then bringing it back to board so that we can have discussions, and then to approve whatever the recommendations that may come forth. Any questions?
So did you want us to choose the meetings that, the committees tonight, or what, what...
What I...
For us to make that decision or discuss it?
I'm just want to present that now and to give you all some time to look at, uh...these areas and decide at our next board meeting as to which one of those committees you would like to be a part of, so that we can make sure that we can expedite as much as we can to get everything taken care of.
So it was negotiations, uh...policy review, and did you say there was a third?
Finance.
Finance, mhm. And unless anyone have any ideas of any other committees we could possibly set up, but those are the three major ones that I was looking at.
Madam President, can we get something in writing if she could send us a list, please?
And I, and I think, and I could be wrong, don't you guys in your board handbook have descriptions of what those committees would be? I believe you do. So that might help the board members if you're looking at trying to decide which committee you'd like to be on or not be on. If you took a look at your board handbook, which is a document approved by the board, I think it has descriptions of what those specific committees are.
What they do, mhm.
I, I believe that's correct.
So are there any, uh...discussions in relation to that?
So on the board operations ones, we're not going to discuss those tonight?
No. We're just, I just want them to be aware of what they are so that they can read through and be, um...knowledgeable, and we will add it into our next board meeting, and so we will have discussion in relation to that at that time. Okay, thank you.
I might just suggest, I know how, how some of the other boards that I work with operate in terms of like the policies, and rather than try and take them all on at once, when they get a board policy committee, they look at a group of them at a time and then come back. So it'd be a pretty Herculean task if you tried to look at all of them at once.
Right.
Yeah.
So just, and then you also have a board, within your board policies, you actually have a policy dealing with adopting, approving, and looking at, at policies as well, so you guys might take a look at that when you're looking at that.
Yes, because I understand that there were some of them that, back in June, that we should have looked at, but we, I mean, it's, it's being pressed right now, and so that we may have to address some, some of those issues.
That's fair. I mean, you've, you've got some policies that are more critical in timeframe, and, and you'll always get, uh...so in June, you'll get a list of recommended change in policy language from KSB, uh...which includes revisions made to deal with statutory updates or changes in regulations, and some of those are legal in nature, and you'll get recommendations on those. But a lot of your policies are, are more preferences or designed to be, this is how we want to operate as opposed to the, to a specific legal requirement. And so, um...I think the way your process goes is that you, you typically have policy language developed, uh...you get some legal review in, in connection with it, uh...you do a first read and then a second read for adoption. That's your normal process.
All right, thank you.
The KSB also sends out in December, recommended changes.
So any other comments? All right. So we'll now go ahead and go to communications with Dr. Faust.
Graduation. Never mind.
So. National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month. Our great nation enacted the Trafficking Victims Protection Act 20 years ago in an effort to address the negative impact related to human trafficking. There have been many instances where people have been unaware that human trafficking is taking place nearby. Humans being deprived of their hu...their personal rights, freedom of speech, independence, and self-respect. As a school district, we're always going to advocate for each student's academic success, but we also look out for the social, emotional needs of, of those. The average age of a child being caught up in human trafficking is 15 years of age. Women and girls represent the vast majority of human trafficking victims. We all play a critical role at the workplace and community to fight human trafficking on a daily basis. Let's remember as we recognize January's National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month, we all play a critical role every day to help combat this global issue. Please do your part and fight against human trafficking by reporting any suspicious or exploit situation. So this month, um...is just that. It's Human Track of Trafficking Month along with, um...Human Slavery Month or National Slavery Month, and we have to do our part. Um...it's not just something that we see on the TVs, that we are looking at throughout. Um...it's not going to happen here, but what we are finding is that there have been many instances where people have, um...actually been a part of human trafficking. So as a school district, I want us to be aware of what's going on, um...and that it's no longer just something that's happening elsewhere, but it's actually happening right here before us. So thank you.
Okay. So one of the things that, um...I want to, uh...address to the board is we have decided to put the, uh...board retreat on February 22nd. We were running into a timeframe and trying to get everything, uh...set up for January, and as it turned out, there was a snowstorm. So therefore, um...we wanted to, uh...make sure that we do things in a timely manner. So what I'm asking the board members to do is if you have any suggestions of anything that we could do to try to, uh...make sure that our retreat is going to be highly effective, so that we can learn how to work cohesively together and work as a team, then therefore I'm asking that you would submit your information, either send it to the board clerk, or you can send it to me, and, uh...we will be setting up a time in which we will be able to, uh...plan it and make sure that it's executed very well. Also, wanted to, uh...let the board members know that, um...back in the sum, this past summer, we, after I went to a workshop, discovered that a third person can come to the agenda planning session, and so therefore you all have received a notice of the time that if you choose to come for that meeting in which, uh...Dr. Faust and Dr. Jaeger and myself will be meeting on the Wednesday before each board meeting, uh...at 4:00, you are welcome to come. Please, uh...submit that sheet to, uh...our board clerk, and she will make sure that...
Sheet if we want to pass it around tonight.
Okay. We'll make sure that everyone will, uh...be able to attend. And again, remember, we can only have three members present at one time. So, uh...just make sure that you sign up for the time that you would be available. The dates are listed there, and so we want to make sure everyone is going to be, uh...have an active role and be engaged in the planning of everything. Uh...we want to make sure that, uh...the information that is coming to us is going to be, as far as questions are concerned, w...we want to try to make sure that we keep those lines of communication open, so that if we have to have any questions or answers, then therefore it can be presented at a proper time. There may be times in which we cannot address it directly at that meeting, and so therefore we will, may have to put it off to the next board meeting, but we will specifically try to answer all questions that may come forward at a decent time, so that we can adequately agree as a board that the response has been given and that we can work through it. Uh...one other thing that I wanted to address is, uh...when we do have community individuals coming to speak to us for a three-minute period, one of the things that I have spoken to our board clerk is that a lot of times we don't hear the responses, uh...the results of what has taken place. And so what we're going to do is we're going to, once that response has been given, it's going to be posted within our board docs, so that you will have availability to it and you will be able to know what's going on. We want to make sure that not only do we keep the lines of communication open to the public, but also to the staff that is working here within the central office, and also to the board members. So with that in mind, uh...did anyone, uh...have any other comments?
We've had lots of wrestling and basketball games. It's been fun. I went to the girls' wrestling meet at Harmon, and I tell you, our girls are the best sportsmanship examples there are. After their meet, their little, whatever it's called, you might know Randy, after their time is over, they stand up and they are so happy with each other. You don't see any of this. They just, they're just so happy to be participating, and it's really great to see that, that energy. And our kids in the basketball games, I mean, there's one, one team the other day lost by quite a bit. Those, those kids were still out there playing. It didn't, didn't matter to them that they were losing. They were playing the game. They were being part of something. So it's really, it's really great to go to those events and see the parents there supporting their kids. We had a lot of parents at that girls' wrestling meet. There, there are a lot of parents out there supporting that, so come on out sometime and have some fun.
Thank you. Anyone else?
On the 17th of December, I didn't get to stay for the whole thing, but the Gear Up had their graduation program, and I would just like to encourage parents who do have children at the middle school level to try to get their kids involved, because they're trying to help kids get to college and, 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 and give them direction. They do require that parents get involved, and there's a program set up for them, and it's free. It, the only thing it's going to cost you is your time. So we got to try to figure out a way to get more people involved. Uh...I did get a chance to go to the legislators' breakfast, and that was good, to interact with other school districts. We all have the same common problems, and we're all working to try to achieve it, to better ourselves. So that was a good thing.
Also, there was a co...um...concert, a midwinter concert, or band jazz and orchestra, I believe, at, um...
Gloria Willis.
Gloria Willis, that's right. It was a while ago. It was so beautiful. It was nice to see the various students play their instruments and sing. They sing so well, and it was just good to see that the students are so dedicated to singing or playing an instrument or what have you, uh...for the community. So I really enjoyed that concert, and, um...it, I think the Jasmine was newly added this year, and they did a, an awesome job. Those students, uh...did really good at being able to continue the liveliness of the evening.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Uh...Wednesday and Thursday in Topeka will be the advocacy days that KSB sponsors, and Thursday is a board meeting.
Thank you. So now, uh...our graduation assignments have been submitted, and, um...one of the things that I spoke with the board clerk about is I know that some of us work at regular jobs during the day, and some of our graduations are going to be held during the daytime, and I submitted names of individuals that I know that are not working. If that is a conflict for you, would you please let her know so that we can make some changes accordingly? And even for those of you who have been listed according to being there at night, would you please, if that's a conflict for you, uh... would you please, if that's a conflict for you, let her know and then we'll make the adjustments accordingly. But we want to make sure that everyone knows that we want to support our schools and our community by being at the graduation as board members. And if you choose, you can go to any of them or all of them as board members. But we're just making sure that you know that you will be assigned to do one of, one or two of those according to our schedule. So are there any questions or comments?
Yeah, is it possible to get the schools to let us know what they want us to do? And before, I know the first time we did it, we got a script. And then the second time, things changed a little bit at some of the schools.
Basically, and, and we can do that, too.
Okay.
The board member's role is to confer the diplomas.
Right, okay.
And there's an actual little statement that you need to, you have to read, but you can send that out.
Okay, okay, thank you. So therefore, we are ready for our calendar of events, of the things that are coming up, particularly with, there is, January 22nd is the board prep in the superintendent's conference room. On the 28th, we'll have a board of education meeting. The board agenda prep is listed on February. We will have another meeting on February 11th and that would be at John Fisk Elementary School. And I'm not going to go through everything for the rest of the month, for the other months, but particularly in February, our board retreat is on February 22nd. We will be giving a specific location of that place, but it will be from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. in the afternoon. And so we're asking our board members to please mark your calendars and again, to, if you have any suggestions as to what you feel that we need to address. But one of the main things that we're going to be working on is developing teamwork and working collectively together so that we can send a positive message out to the community and work with each other to be as one, to do the best we can for our students as well as within the community. So with that, could I get a motion for us to adjourn? So move. It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn our meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposedes, the ayes have it. Thank you.